County Board of Supervisors, I'd like to kick off this meeting by inviting you to join me in a salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, it was very, very good, thank you so much. So, Madam C A O, are there any modifications to the agenda?
There are no modifications to the agenda this morning.
Thank you, that will move us on to the consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
No modifications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any comment on the consent calendar?
Ken Swatzky, my public comment would be, I did read your letter that you're sending off, a little contentious last time on the support for the Redwood Memorial, I found that to be quite acceptable, great changes there I thought, was not contentious. There's a one on here, item three, and it's a quarterly report of current projected vacancies in Humboldt County appointed boards committees. I've always felt we kind of lacked a policy, procedure, and protocol for dealing with those vacancies, and maybe that's why you have so many vacancies on there. I think Channel 10 Eureka usually advertises their vacancies, and if people are awake at night they see those, but nobody really knows what's vacant out there, I have to go to this particular agenda to read it. So here are a couple of things that are on there, just so the public knows, Greg Seiler terms out on March of 2020, that's next month, District Two has a vacancy as far as the planning commission, and of course that's Estelle's appointment to do at her will there. And then the other one that we've continually had a problem, or I've seen a problem with by not having a policy, procedure, and protocol, is that two days from now, and it hasn't been noticed, nobody's reached out to anybody, it should have been on today's agenda, Richard Marx's term on the N C R A expires, that's 2/6/2020, and of course that went on for a year and a half once, when it expired one time. You'd think you guys would get some kind of policy where the people were reached out to, your Matty List, and at this meeting you were making a decision on that. I see no reason for your CEO not to have a policy there and implement that in conjunction with the board to make sure that happens for us. It makes no sense to have this happen over and over and over again, and it makes it difficult for people to know what's happening, you know, when somebody expires, that should be done well in advance, 60 days is what I recommend, 60 days in advance, and this is brought before you, you can either have a policy that directs a procedure to be put in effect 60 days in advance, so that these appointments can be made in a timely manner. It does not bode well when the public feels like certain people are left in certain positions just because certain people want to keep them there for whatever reason, so that's the perception if you don't deal with these expirations of people in a timely manner. So please, I would direct your CEO at some time to consider coming up with a policy, procedure, and protocol that enables you to fill all the vacancies. There's quite a few other ones out there, as you're aware, which you're trying to fill. They could be advertised, they should be advertised to some media or something, so that you can fill them with competent people, rather last minute appointments. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, any further comment on items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board, Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, I do too like the new and approved letter, but I do want to thank Supervisor Fennell for jumping on the letter last week, it may have been a little premature, but the idea of women's and childcare in the Old River Valley was not premature when that first came up, and even though we may have fell a little bit short on the outreach, the point got across that we need to worry, and that has to be preeminent, so I do want to thank Supervisor Fennell for taking the action and standing up for our women's rights and our children's rights in the Old River Valley, so thank you.
Thank you very much Supervisor Bone. So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, passes unanimously. So that will take us on to public comment on items not on the agenda. The mayor may not have a list, but if you're thinking of speaking on items not on the agenda, now is your chance. No one on the list. Mr. Swatzky.
Hardly anybody in the room today, maybe you're doing everything right, I don't know, let's assume that's why it is. I think there's still a few little problems we need to work out here, and I'm going to continue to harp on what I feel refer to as Amy Gate. What have we done so far regarding Jeffrey Blank, and he's not being reviewed today on the agenda, 10 months plus paid administrative leave. Well, let's see, we've gone in retroactively tried to deal with the situation, we've approved a policy and procedure that might have enabled him to be terminated, but I think the proof is that most people, since we don't know what the accusations are, I don't know if he knows after 10 months, I mean this is unheard of, people are always, that I'm aware of, told of what is it about, so you can fix it. If that hasn't been done, then you're in a very, very bad position, because judges don't like that. Judges don't like not having definitive answers to questions, dodging questions is something they have a real irritant with, because then they go ahead and make an order, and order everybody to answer those questions later. So where are we going with this one? The public perception is that possibly a deal was done, I see Blair Angus is not here again today, she is the interim county council, in my opinion, that's the main county council's job, is to be here sitting in that chair, and again, I will say Scott Miles, you call him Smiles, is doing the job, and so I don't know, I really don't know how this is working out, I can't understand this whole process. The public perception is that Blair was, got I think seven months of retroactive pay to be doing that particular job, which she wasn't sitting in the chair during that time period, and the public perception is that most likely its part is the quid pro quo deal in this thing behind the scenes, she well could retire in April, totally spiked out, and retire costing the county, what, probably $20,000 a year more than if she'd worked to fruition without being put in that position. Circumstantial evidence in the Amy Gate coverup is not boding well, and the people have a right to know how their money's being spent, and why people are put on leave, why this is the only person I've seen put on leave under any circumstance, and yet after 10 months, and I don't even know if you have your report back from your investigation, my perception is maybe it wasn't going that well, there's no there there, and so possibly that report just goes away and we'll never hear what happened out of that. But you can clarify these all by bringing certain things that you can bring to light, and I know there's certain things you can't, but on the other hand transparency and fairness for all out there in the playing field regarding all your employees, and the main thing is cooling the whistleblower, you know, if someone does not feel they can whistleblow out there, chilling is the term I think they use, if you're not able to come and vet a problem without feeling there's going to be retribution, or the public perceives there will be, then that is a real problem for county government, thank you.
Thank you, any further comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, that will bring us to our next item on the agenda, which is brought to us by Supervisors Wilson and Bass, and it regards safety concerns due to target shooting occurring within densely populated residential recreational areas, and I guess coming out of Samoa area, so.
Well, I'll start, thank you Madam Chair, actually it's, while there may be a lot of conversation and some things in some media about Samoa, this is actually more peninsula-wide, and I think can be looked at more as a continuation of other protections we've taken to make sure that folks who live in densely populated areas or recreational work feel safe, and so it's not specific to any one area, and I'll let Supervisor Wilson kind of elaborate a little more on some of the concerns coming from that end of the peninsula.
Yeah, I want to be clear that this conversation isn't necessarily about one particular area in Humboldt County, and especially even my district, because I get complaints, and I think we've all get complaints related to people feeling safe in their neighborhoods, and also, and not just in their neighborhoods, also when they're out recreating in certain areas of Humboldt County, with relationship to the activity of target shooting, and I want to be clear that we're not talking today about hunting, we're exempting that from this discussion today, because it has its own set of regulations associated with it, so I want to be really clear about that, so that we're really talking about what is unregulated target shooting. I want to be also very clear, kind of on the outset, that we have some places where target shooting is quite regulated, and when we talk about north of the Samoa Peninsula, because the peninsula ends at the north end, we have the, I think it's the Redwood Gun Club, done a wonderful job of being very active in the community in terms of, in terms of being a good partner in that neighborhood, in terms of their ability to communicate with neighbors and agencies, and run a very well, very, you know, well-maintained and regulated space. I mean, there are, of course, you know, for new people to the area, sometimes it's, it can be a little offsetting, off-putting for a moment, but there's, it's signed, it's, you know, and those sorts of things, so I want to make clear that we're really talking about sort of unregulated perspectives of this. We have in the past, in the current status of what we have in terms of regulations related to target shooting in Humboldt County now, we don't have any specific ordinance that covers countywide, we have our first ordinance that dealt with this, I think, had to do with county parks, so within our county parks ordinance, target shooting is not allowed within county parks, and then also secondarily, and added on to that ordinance, was the area of Mad River Estuary, because there were issues related to people discharging firearms in that area as well, and so that was basically delineated as an area not appropriate for firearms, and then more recently, I think it's almost in the last year, and maybe, maybe two years ago, it all blends together, I can't tell, three years ago, okay, that's how it rolls, and my kid is still 12, I don't know, anyways, so we delineated all public lands within a half mile of our state highways, to also not be areas for target shooting, and we did that in response to, you know, more of what was happening in kind of a specific area, but we knew that was happening in other areas as well, so, and that had to do with complaints related to the Fern Bridge area for the most part, although there are other areas as well, but, and sort of the safety, the feelings of safety, and real safety of the ranching community in that area, and the dairies, and those sorts of things, so we're getting similar complaints, I suppose, I'm getting them from different parts of my county, but I can tell you, or my district, but I can tell you that the Samoa Peninsula, from Manila all the way down to the end, we're having, we're having issues, and so that I think is part of the conversation today, we can have that conversation. We kind of put a list of ideas out here in the, in the agenda, some of which were including, you know, currently C D F and W, it's, there is, for hunting, there's, you know, there's a prohibition on discharge of firearms within 150 yards of occupied buildings, one option, and I'm not saying we have to pick one, we could pick multiples, but one option is to look at for that, that for target shooting within Humboldt County as well, and not allowing discharges within 150 yards of a zone, we could put, ask staff to come back with conditional use options in terms of like within certain zonings, if you want to have an established target shooting range, you would have to ask the county for a conditional use permit, and in that way neighbors would have the ability to, to respond to that. We could have prohibitions within certain zonings, just straight up, within residential zonings, within those other things, and we could look at those, and those are some of the options that we have in terms of, in terms of responses to how we might want to bring a sense of health and safety to our, to our neighbors. So with that, I'm going to cede to Supervisor Bass, if she wants to speak some more.
And I did want to mention the Peninsula Community Cooperative, and Emily is here today, I just called it P C C, I might have the acronym all wrong, but they've been very involved in talking to members on the Peninsula about the feelings of safety and how they can be improved, because the original conversations reminded me very much of when we were talking three years ago about the situation over by Fern Bridge, because people were having bullets whiz over their head, and while, you know, people may have been well intending to shoot in a certain direction where it would have been safe, there were, that wasn't always happening, so it seemed to make sense to come and have a conversation today, and what it looks like, you know, I think we're going to be listening to, you know, what's coming from this board, and hopefully get something to send staff, send back with staff so that they can bring something that is reasonable, but also does help achieve this purpose. On the Peninsula, many of you know that there's a lot of building going on, and there's going to be a lot more, so given the fact that there'll be so many more residents out there, it does have more of a feeling of a city, and we're not a city, but I think we should do what we can to provide comfort and a sense of protect, you know, feel like a safe place for residents to live as much as we can. And I also want to say, when I put this, you know, had my name on here, and a few people call and say, what's this about, you know, your son, they all hunt, and it's like, yeah, they do, one of my sons sells guns locally, the other one's a Marine, right, so I have no, I have no problems with target shooting, but there are right places to do it, I think, and I think we need to kind of figure out where that area is.
Thank you Supervisor Bass, Supervisor Bone.
And just remember when we did the Fern Bridge one, and is the most active participant was the sheriff, because at the end of the day, we can make, and I see him here, but we can make all the rules we want, but does he have the bodies and the wherewithal to enforce them, and that we give him enough teeth to enforce them, because just to make a rule that can't be enforced, which is just wrong. And the other thing I'd like to do, as we sit here and take away these unsafe places, because it's, people are moving into the historic places we've always used to shoot, I've been shooting here for over 50 years, so the historic places now have houses around them, so we don't shoot, and I think when you talk about the shooting public and everything else, that the problem, and we saw this at Fern Bridge, because I was down there a lot, it's less than 5% that are creating the problem, and 95% are going to have to suffer the consequences. We see that up here on air quality issues, you know, with our, you know, because of the air quality in the southern part of the state compared to here, so, and so we all abide, so we can make it a better state all the way around, but I think the input from the sheriff, and I see one of the gun ranges here, but I think as we look around, we've looked at other sites, some of our resource lands that we can actually replace, give them another option, the problem is they have no options, they literally have no options to go, you know, cite their guns in, shoot, and everything else. There are, there, I mean, there's a brand new place, you can go pay $25 an hour, which is great, and everybody loves it, there are, but I mean, open range shooting, the great outdoors, so you can shoot more than 25 yards and things like that, so there are options, so, but I think we have to have the availability, but first and foremost, if we, if we put something out there that can't be enforced, and then enforced through the courts, then, and that's what took so long, I think, for Fern Bridge, so.
Supervisor Madron.
Thank you Madam Chair, I appreciate this being brought forward, and having an opportunity to have a discussion with the community. I too have gotten a lot of complaints in McKendaville, which is very much a city, whether it's incorporated or not, but I also know folks on the edge of McKendaville, like in the bottoms, want to be able to do their hunting and things like that, in some of the rural areas, people do target shoot in their backyards, and in the rural areas and stuff, and so, you know, I support the right for people to want to do that, I think the important thing is to recognize that with all rights comes that other "our" responsibility, and I get a lot of calls from people even in rural areas that are on large parcels, but the sound, the noise, some people have P T S D from war, or they just didn't perceive that in going to a rural area, they'd be dealing with guns blasting and large noises on a regular basis, with bullets whizzing, they not sure what the origin is, and all these things, and people will tell me they go talk with their neighbors, and sometimes that works out pretty well, but sometimes the individual gets even more arrogant and more in your face about it, so, you know, I just encourage all of us, gun users and otherwise, to be responsive and responsible to our neighbors, but even with that, I think as Supervisor Bone said, there's a small number that are irresponsible, that create a lot of problems for everybody else, so it's that responsibility piece that is, that is so critical to this. I like the idea of the 150 yards related to everything, it shouldn't just be in regards to hunting, if you're within 150 yards of an occupied house, it makes sense to me that there should be some form of consideration around that. I get calls from West Haven, I get calls from Willow Creek, I get calls from Fieldbrook about people being concerned about this, so I think it's time to figure out how we can try and provide a little more protection for our community, while also allowing for responsible gun users to be able to do the things that they do. As a young Boy Scout, I was in the NRA, you know, and I learned how to shoot a rifle and all those kinds of things, so I understand the needs and desires around that, but I'm fully supportive of trying to figure out as a community, what we can do to try and balance this, and provide some, some increased degree of safety for our communities, so thanks for bringing it forward.
Thank you, so at this point, having heard from everyone, I'll just say, I'll open it up to the public, although I would like to invite the sheriff up, since you've been mentioned, Sheriff Hansel, if you have any thoughts on that, before I open it up to everyone else. Welcome.
Good morning Sheriff Hansel, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board on this, I've spoken with, with many of you regarding the shooting ordinance over the last couple of years, and how it's developed through the issues from Fern Bridge, and to the issues surrounding the densely populated areas in Humboldt County. Now each city has an ordinance that says no discharge of a firearm within the city limits, and because of that closely densely populated areas, and, and so that was concerns with all the cities, and so as, as urban sprawl does occur, you know, people do want to test it, we did have a case in Pine Hill where we had a resident that was citing in his hunting rifle in Pine Hill, in a residential area, and, and so that did occur, and it was within his lawful right to do so, and though it disturbed his neighbors, and it was very disruptive, was there a crime violation? We couldn't find one, because we couldn't prove that there was a negligent discharge, that that went anywhere other than the bank, you know, that he shot into, so it takes that in order for us to prove a criminal case to the district attorney. If we recreate any kind of an ordinance, I've spoke with several people that, including the local NRA groups, and about, you know, regulating, you know, firearm discharging in the, in private property, that's a very, very touchy subject, and so, you know, we don't want to restrict someone's use of firearms, as long as they're doing it responsibly, right? And so this, this, this idea about going and paralleling with the fish and game ordinance, the law about distances between 150 yards from an occupied residence, is something that I think is reasonable, it's reasonable within the community, now if you have permission of that, or if you are that property owner, or if you have permission from that property owner, then there isn't a law violation, and so I think that's, that's an important aspect of it, doesn't prevent it from 150 yards, but if you have permission from that property owner, or that, that resident that's living there, to shoot within 150 yards, you can do that, that fish and game ordinance does, does allow that to happen, so, so I think that is reasonable, if you feel like this is a, something that you want to push forward as the board to create another ordinance, but just like Supervisor Bone said, we don't want to create an ordinance that's impossible to enforce. Right now, we do go to random shooting calls throughout the county, someone hears a shot, but doesn't know the exact location, we take that down as essentially beat information, and then, and throughout the beat, throughout the shift, then the deputy will swing by there to see if there's anything that he can see, but it's impossible, the amount of, the sound distance, and to determine how, you know, how far someone was from residents when they shot, that is going to be a very, very difficult thing, unless we have some, some, some pretty significant evidence, video, eyewitness, those kind of things that we can actually use in court of law, but, so, we're limited on those resources to be able to follow up on some of these, and, and it doesn't take care of a lot of the other issues out there, with the noise and the annoyance of that, but, but we can still look at that, and we can address it, and I'll be more than happy to work with, with county staff on, on this, and bring it back to you.
Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Mr. Hansel, in the areas, in the last area that we were kind of focusing on, which was the riverbed area for Fern Bridge area.
Yes.
Did the ordinance that we passed after that, was there a change in behavior that you, has there been less calls and less issues?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, but is it any, really any more or less enforceable than it was before?
You know, a couple of different factors weighed into that, one, the ordinance came in, and then also access was, was, was denied to those locations, you know, they put K rails up, and so it made it difficult for people to go down into that Fern Bridge area. People are still shooting along the river bar, they are shooting, you know, away from the highways, so our reports have been, have been dropped tremendously in that area, and so it has made a significant impact, and it gave us also teeth, so we can encourage people, or say, listen, you have to maintain this distance, and so.
Right, and so a lot of this isn't necessarily about enforcement, it's really about behavior modification.
Sure.
So, I mean, I think we, that's, we have to take that into consideration, so that when we say in an ordinance, there are certain areas where we have target shooting that's prohibited, you know, in general, yeah, enforcement may or may not be as easy as it was before, but certainly the message is very different, and for, again, that 95% of the people who will basically, when informed, obey the law, that can, that can result in a pretty dramatic decrease in the activity that's creating these, you know, health and safety issues, and I mean health and safety, even if you're shooting into a bank, if it's near enough where people live and are having, you know, issues with that, and feeling unsafe, and you know how feeling unsafe is not very far different from being unsafe quite often, in terms of your job and what we're trying to deliver to our constituents and to the citizenry, so I, I mean, I understand this issue of enforcement, but behavior modification through these ordinances matters, and it certainly has mattered in the locations where we've applied these, and I don't think we've seen any more arrests from those areas, but we've seen decreases in, in the behaviors we're trying to modify.
Absolutely, you know, and I would love to be able to just have a good neighbor policy within our county, and for people to respect their neighbors, you know, in that aspect of things, and if you're shooting within 150 yards of a neighbor and they complain, that they would just stop that shooting, but unfortunately, that doesn't happen, you know, and, and so, you know, we do have people that do do that and do respect their neighbors, but we do have people that, that do push the envelope, and, and don't instill that confidence that they're shooting in a, in a correct direction, and.
And I don't know where we go from here today, we'll kind of have that discussion more, is that me or you?
It's not me.
Okay, that, the, sorry, I lost my train of thought, anyways.
Well, you have some other colleagues who want to talk with the sheriff too.
All right, well, I'll, I'll write down my question, I'll have it for you in just a minute.
Sounds good.
Supervisor Bass.
Thank you Madam Chair, and thank you Sheriff Hansel for being here today, and I think Supervisor Wilson just mentioned, you know, the feeling of safety, and it wasn't, I think it was two weeks ago, when on a Sunday, I called you, because I had a resident in a specific area that was absolutely, you know, very scared, and very upset, because there'd been shooting sounds in the past, and she thought she heard something, and felt that, and then she found her window broken out, and so her thought in fear was that, you know, it was due to a gunshot, and you were very responsive, and you sent someone out to talk with her, and, you know, to find out it was, it was a faulty window.
Right.
But it's things like that where people's nerves are so frayed as it is, that anything does, you know, make it a very traumatic experience at, at times, given who the person is, and the situation. You mentioned, you know, the. You mentioned, you know, the property owner, and then you did mention resident. In some cases, the resident is not the property owner, and I was wondering if you were distinguishing between who actually lives in the inhabited dwelling and who has the, you know, who has the ability to say, no, it's not okay.
Yeah. Whoever occupies the residence is really the person that the spirit of law is going to. So I think the Fish and, I can just read it, and maybe the Fish and Wildlife Code section, so you understand exactly what that says. So it's Fish and Wild, or Fish and Game Code 3004A. It is unlawful for any person other than the owner, person in possession of the premises, or a person having the express permission of the owner or permission, or person in possession of the premises, to hunt or to discharge while hunting any firearm or other deadly weapon within 150 yards of any occupied dwelling, house, residence, or other building or barn, or other outbuilding used in connection therewith. The 150-yard area is a quote "safety zone."
Supervisor Bone?
Well, I, behavioral modification is a big part of it, but, and it was 18 months ago that we actually passed the Fern Bridge ordinance. It was almost three years ago that we put up, the barricades were put up. And when I say we, we didn't put them up, I happened to be out of town and my phone started ringing off the hook. The property owner who had been trying to explain to people that they were shooting over, they were shooting into a seven-foot bank, and they were just, it was rising. So the property owners down there got together, and they purchased and put up the, because my first call was to Tom going, did we do that? So what that's allowed, though, the other factor, but talk about modification, there used to be an annual cleanup at Fern Bridge every year of trash on the river bar, dumping and everything else. It has stopped that immensely. It has stopped a lot of activities, a lot of sheriff calls, probably cut the sheriff calls down 90% underneath Fern Bridge, was just the access, it was an attractive nuisance. The Fish and Game has got teeth, that, so we could look at putting that into place, but I'd like to, short of a task force, we had this a few years ago with Tannerite, and everybody was screaming about Tannerite. And I talked to every sporting goods store owner there was, and a few don't carry it, quite a few don't carry it, a few do. I talked to the Tannerite manufacturer, and he says it runs its course about every three or four years, and people, it's expensive for one. And we don't have, that's, I had more complaints about that. But enforcing, enforcing what we're talking about here is almost like enforcing fireworks. It's really hard, because by the time the officer gets there, the fireworks are no longer going off unless somebody's videoed it or anything else. It's New Year's night, I was out on patrol for New Year's night, and, yeah, I'm that exciting guy. But we had a lot of fireworks calls, that was probably about a third of our calls. And it's hard to say you did it, because, unless they've left everything in the, so I think we need to do something that is workable for the sheriff. But I'd hate to put, I'd love to talk to the people that are going to be affected by this, both the land, the homeowners, and, because I think the sporting goods stores and the gun store owners and the shooting range enthusiasts, I've got a neighbor that leaves every day to go to the shooting range, but he goes to the shooting range, he's responsible and everything else. That's not accessible for everybody, some people can't go that far, some people want to shoot closer to their home because it's easier. So I think if we can provide somewhere for them, work with everybody, and then initiate a, ordinance is already in place, basically statewide, and bring it into the fold, I think it would be a lot easier, and I think easier on sheriff, I'm not sure, he's nodding his head, but, so.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I absolutely agree that, you know, education, signage, really important elements to any of this kind of stuff, and I think that was part of what happened with Fern Bridge. I know it definitely, signage and educational work definitely helped with the Mad River. I know Kevin Jenkins from Ace Hardware went to great effort to make sure that he had signs posted to educate the community, many who come to his store. And so that was great, putting up barriers to make it more difficult to drive down in certainly seems to have helped at Fern Bridge. But I'm curious, you know, in cities, there's simply no discharge of firearms. And it would seem to me, and I'd like your opinion on this, that an ordinance like that on specific areas, in this case, city limits, saying no discharge of firearms, if you had that and you put it up against, there was no ordinance against discharge of firearms, but only an ordinance for discharging within 150 feet of a residence, it would seem to me it'd be a lot easier to enforce the no discharge, because then there's no questions. If there's a discharge, it's a violation of the ordinance, it's that simple. If it were 150-yard ordinance, is it 150 yards? You got to measure something, you got to find out if the neighbor actually agreed and was okay. I mean, it seems to me that would be less enforceable than having simply a no discharge in city limits. Can you tell me, in your experience talking to Arcata and Eureka, has the no discharge within city limits, is that pretty enforceable, and does that work for those cities in a good way?
Well, I think it's mostly one of those things that people just don't do it, because, again, it's within city limits, they know it's a violation, and they're going to get law enforcement action pretty quickly. But the balance is, when you have 4,000 square mile county, and you have pockets of densely populated areas, it's difficult to determine where those areas would be. And so the intent of it, the intent of passing an ordinance like this would be to protect the residents. And if you have a, an ordinance such like the Fish and Game Code that says, you know, if 150 yards of a dwelling, it covers the county, it covers those issues, and then if you have permission from that property owner, then it's okay, otherwise, then you shouldn't do it. And it's just as difficult to prove, you know, if someone, you hear a gunshot in your neighborhood, where'd that come from? It's usually behind a fence, it's usually, there's no eyewitnesses, and we're just in the area checking, and we go away. But for someone who is repeatedly shooting firearms and target shooting, people are going to take note, and they are going to call us probably with some specific information, maybe even some videotape or audiotape evidence, and we're able to follow up with that.
Right. So with city limits, it's pretty clear, here's the city limit, so even though that doesn't necessarily make it all completely easy to enforce, it certainly is a defined boundary that makes it easier for enforcement to occur. Whereas in the county, well, we, you know, in order to have something equal to that, we'd have to identify those densely populated areas in the county and have some sort of a map that says, in this part of Willow Creek, or this part of downtown Fieldbrook, or this part of McKinneyville, we might want to have something similar to what cities have because it is densely populated. McKinneyville, I think, is perhaps the easiest of all those, because I think most people recognize it is very much a city, even though it's not incorporated. So, you know, on the agenda here, it talks about possibly forming a citizens advisory committee, or something along those lines, to be able to come back with some detailed suggestions, working with your department and others in the community. Is that where we think we might go with this? I mean, I certainly agree with Supervisor Bone, whatever we do, we want to make it as enforceable as possible, otherwise it just makes no sense at all. I think the 150 yards is a good start to that. Maybe if McKinneyville becomes incorporated, that becomes a much easier topic there, but I don't think it's going to eliminate the problems I'm hearing from West Haven, or Fieldbrook, or Willow Creek in regards to those densely populated areas and regular discharge. It's not like it's just once every now and then, but people will talk about ongoing booms in the night, you know, and stuff, and I don't know if that's Tannerite, or just large caliber weapons that are going off, but I hear the concerns a lot. And, yeah, it is a lot like fireworks and those kinds of things, so, anyway, just some thoughts.
Yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
I mean, using the fireworks analogy, I would say that if we didn't have laws against fireworks, it would all be so much worse. And just because it's hard to enforce during two days a year does not mean that we want to pull back on our regulations with relationship to fireworks. So I don't see that as a, you know, as a good example necessarily of why we shouldn't move forward with something. And I will say that if we asked any of our cities, hey, why don't you just take your prohibition and just make it 150 yards instead, you know, is that going to make things easier or more pleasant for your citizens? There's no way that they would go and move it back from the prohibition related to their boundaries. And I would also say, like, we don't know where boundaries begin and end for cities in general. I mean, sometimes there's a sign, but oftentimes there is not. And so the idea that that's, that that boundary is so well-defined, that you're just going to cross over and know exactly where it is, that's, you know, so, so to have that, a bit of ambiguity around our more densely populated areas within the county, I think is consummate, I think it's reasonable, or it's not out of line. So, I mean, from my perspective, I find that the 150 yards are just leaning on that by itself is actually more confusing in terms of enforcement. I like it as a step, but I, from my perspective, I think we, there are certain areas we could start with that we know we have an issue, we've done it before already, when we did the quarter mile from all the roads, we defined an area, that was a defined area, we did it, right? And we created an ordinance. I think, we're not talking about necessarily a new ordinance, I think we're talking about modification to an existing target shooting ordinance. And so, I don't know, I want to hear from the public on this a little bit more, but I, you know, I want to, I want us to enact something that really fundamentally gets some changes to help citizens in our, you know, more densely populated areas feel safer, and as safe as our municipal city partners can deliver that same sort of sense of safety.
Hold on a second, Supervisor Bone has another question for you.
And nowhere in there do I want to move back the regulations on fireworks, because, but the issue being on enforcement, how many people have we cited for illegal fireworks?
Uh, very few, yes, not none.
And how many people, we're not going to ask for a raise of hands, how many people, more than two nights a year hear fireworks? And those Tannerite booms you hear in the night, those aren't Tannerite booms, those are fireworks, those are mortars going off in the night. Because the problem with Tannerite is you've got to put it all together, you've got to mix the two together, then you have to shoot it. Unless you have night goggles or night vision scope and everything else, they're not going to go that much trouble, they're going to drop off a mortar, so that's Tannerites out of the question. These are people that are picking up mortars in Nevada, they have huge warehouses that you can buy as many as you want. I've got a bunch of pictures on my, well, my phone that got ran over. And outside of Las Vegas, there was a cannabis store and a big fireworks warehouse right next to each other, and I think I sent the text to somebody, yeah, that can't be a problem here. But that's, you can walk in and buy as much as you want, and people are buying truckloads and bringing them across the border. So the accessibility of this stuff, and so it's something we have to address. Now, if we want to work on certain areas, you know, it's going to be tough, because we have a regulated urban area at Alder Point, if you want, we have one in Bridgeville. It's going to be a mapping nightmare. The 150 yards can be, and I don't know how much bigger we'd make it, and I think we need to have, short of an advisory committee, or we could have an advisory committee, the 150 yards, and the thing is, I don't think we're going to have anybody measure it off and go, okay, I'm at 151 yards, I can shoot here. I mean, I think the generality, the signage and the education, I think we changed, and I'm not mistaken, I think we changed four signs within the first six weeks at Fern Bridge, because they got shot, believe it or not. It was, it's a huge issue, and I think it's a huge issue at Mad River still, that sometimes they get shot, because that 5% is very active. So whatever we do is, we need to make sure, like I said, make sure it's enforceable, and make sure that it gives the residents of our county some idea of tranquility and peacefulness in their house, so they don't suffer those issues where they think a faulty window just got shot out. Because obviously, I think you had the great point, if you think there's going to be a problem, there is going to be a problem. So, I, the easiest one to get something going now, because it looks like it's an issue going into the spring, and then the fall when it becomes deer hunting season, but I don't think that's the problem. I think our problem is just people that are irresponsible. I mean, it's, we can put all the signage you want, but how many people drove past you today in the 50, in the safety corridor, when it's a 55 mile an hour zone, and it's signed up to be like no tomorrow? So it's all about enforcement and knowledge and getting it out there. And I think if we can find something that's a happy medium, that's enforceable, it almost sounds like Shangri-La, but I think that's where we're after. And I understand, you know, and when McKinneyville, if and when it gets incorporated, is that going to include Cornell? Is that going to include, I mean, is that going to include the area where it's really happening? How far out Fieldbrook are you going to go, because they're going on the Green Diamonds property and shooting? So I can guarantee you, no matter how much you incorporate, somebody's going to say, you should have gone another 100 yards, because I've got people doing this on my property. So I think if we sit together and make a good plan, the Fern Bridge plan has worked, because you're right. We sat here and talked about it for how many meetings, some of the access was taken away, and the sheriff did make a few, there was no citation, just says, you guys realize this is a non-shooting range, because people have been going down to that river bar for 50 years and shooting, that was always acceptable. It's not anymore. So, education, planning, and putting the pressure on that 5% that just don't want to abide by the rules, so.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Before I open it up, I did have a question for Supervisor Bass and Supervisor Wilson, and are we talking about people target shooting? Is that what's happening? Is there like, are there a couple of areas where this is happening, or is it just sporadic shooting all over the peninsula?
Well, I can speak too. I know in an area of Samoa, there is some specific target type shooting, which actually apparently has quieted down since about October, but I think there are still concerns as the city, as the community starts building with all the homes, it just doesn't seem as appropriate. So, but I do believe there's also problems along more of the recreational areas. I don't get as many of those calls, but perhaps Supervisor Wilson can fill that in.
Yeah, we've had some conversations with residents in the peninsula area, not just Samoa, but also down as far as Fairhaven up in Manila, who have also felt like that there, that there's target shooting that's related to whether or not it's sporadic, or whether or not it's somewhat organized. Their request is that, or their concern is that they're not feeling safe with that, and would like to have the sheriff be able to respond and not have to judge whether something is safe or not safe, just say, this can't happen here. And so I think that that's what we're talking about. And again, I want to reiterate, the, this is not impact, you know, this is, this conversation is not, from my perspective anyway, and from my district, not related to the existing and very formalized target range that exists. This is the ad hoc versions of those things.
Yeah, I know, I'm just harking back to when we had that whole discussion about Fern Bridge, there were some very specific concerns that, you know, a lot of history about that in the past, and then people coming in, and as Supervisor Bone references, people putting, using Tannerite and shooting at that, and shooting at antifreeze cans, and I don't know, it was kind of refrigerates, I mean, it was, it was really, and then also down by the creek. So I think knowing what the specific concerns are will help us a little bit more too. With that, I'll open it up to the public for comment on this item.
Kent Swawsky, owning, carrying, and shooting a firearm responsibly is legal. Owning, carrying, and shooting a firearm irresponsibly is not legal. Now we have definitions. I strongly recommend you consider not going any further than the 150 yard, at least at this time. That's been tested by the courts, and of course, you're going to have people who feel they have more rights, a lot of people who shoot responsibly are going to contest probably this, even that. But minimize your being tied up in courts, otherwise, if you have something there for five years, it doesn't go into effect. I mean, it's just plain and simple. So I take little bites at it, we strongly support considering, the biggest problem I see out there is there's a significant portion of that 5% that are busting shots to irritate their neighbors and also make them fearful. And that's the biggest concern. And that's the biggest concern we have. I mean, these, some of these people are justified. I know all kinds of people, hey, I've got a neighbor, he's mad because I don't want him doing this, that, or whether, and he's out there busting shots at all hours of night driving by my house, revving his motor up and intimidating. That has to stop. Now, how far do you go with this? I don't know. It sounds like, well, out in the rural area, out in Susie Q where I'm out there, we're two and a half acres, you know, someone will bust a shot in the middle of the night, well, the bear is breaking in their garb, but they shoot a shot over the top of his head. We call each other the next morning and say, was that you? You know, did you have a problem? And make sure everything, that's rural living. I mean, that's what happens out there. On the other hand, when you have people shooting at nighttime, generally, there is no reason for that. And so, I have seen, you know, you watch TV and you see the game wardens, and they have the shows, they go out there and they find a few shots, they listen to their neighbors, and they go out and find the person. I mean, it is doable, and they measure it out exactly 150 yards. I mean, the guy goes out there and they show him doing it, you know, with a rangefinder or else taping it out to see where it is. So, it is enforceable, but it's all perception. The perception is, if you have a few people that it's enforced on, the word gets out there, you have your rules and regulations, they have to be consistent. I don't see any reason, I mean, up above Blue Lake up there, there's a wonderful shooting range up there, and they have range masters, perfect place. Nobody has an excuse not to cite the rifling. As far as not wanting to drive that far, I won't go for that one. If it's important enough to hunt, there should be four or five of those around where everybody can go, and that should take care of that. But we do need to make some changes, and I strongly support you finally making some changes overall countywide, and I also support ideas such as McKinleyville and density areas. Maybe these things go away if you have less, if you have less than an acre. Pick a number, you've got a distance of 150 yards, you're going to have to have two and a half acres to sit right in the middle and shoot a tin can in the ground, probably. But I strongly support doing something. It's kind of way past time. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Carol Vandermeer, and I'm a resident out in Manila. I'm also a member of the Peninsula Community Collaborative, and I also serve on that collaborative as a rep from the Manila Community Services District, but today I'm here speaking as a resident. And being a part of that Peninsula Collaborative has been really beneficial. We've gotten different Peninsula residents from Manila and Fairhaven and Samoa, and listened to one another's concerns and have really gotten together with the support of the Redwood Community Action Agency staff to really address some of the concerns and feeling of safety on the peninsula. And it came to the collaborative's attention that there were folks in Samoa who were feeling very unsafe about target shooting that was happening. And as we further discussed this and appreciated having the supervisors come and attend to and listen to some of our concerns, I just want to speak in favor of coming up with some sort of ordinance and looking at maybe options number one or two in your staff report, because we do have a shooting range on the peninsula. And I've been there, I'm not gun owner, but I see how safely that's run, how appropriate it is for people who do want to get some target practice in, and I guess I don't understand if there are obstacles for people using that, but it seems to me that that is a reasonable place. And being out near residence, even 150 yards, that to me seems problematic. I also enjoy walking out, there's lots of recreational areas out in the dunes, and I have encountered people who've been out there with rifles, or I'm not a gun person, but they're big guns, they look like to me, and it's very much a feeling of feeling unsafe. And they said, oh, I'm just out here target practice. That makes me uncomfortable because, you know, the sight distances, so having something that not only addresses residential areas, but also recreational areas, it just makes sense to me. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the Board of Supervisors, good morning. My name is Robert Falls, a 50-year resident of Arcatah in Humboldt County. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you regarding a proposed shooting ordinance for our county, which appears as item G on your agenda today. I represent only myself in this matter. For personal background, I'm a graduate from California State University Humboldt, class of 1973, major in geography. I've spent my entire working career in Humboldt County with experience in working for the California Coastal Commission, county planning and public works department, two private engineering firms, a lumber mill, and a commercial laundromat. I enjoyed the laundromat. Does this qualify me as an expert witness? No. However, this isn't a court of law. Excuse me. I'm a 37-year member of the Redwood Gun Club, of which I was an executive board member for 15 years. I'm a registered range master there, and I'm a state licensed hunter education instructor with over 35 years of teaching experience. I'm a firearms owner and target shooter. I fully understand the rules of safe firearms handling. In my residential neighborhood, I've experienced the sound of gunshots and someone launching industrial-grade aerial fireworks over my roof at night. So, yes, I do understand the concerns of residents being exposed to sounds of promiscuous shooting. I might add, I spent two years in the US Army. I know what the sound of gunfire is like. The discharge of a firearm is not, in and of itself, an illegal, immoral, or unethical act. The location and timing of it are the only issue. I recall being back in the late 1980s, a matter of a person legally duck hunting by the Mad River Estuary, taking a passing shot at a duck with residents in the distant background. The owner of one of the residents there was outside their house and struck by a pellet from the shot. Fortunately, to the property owner and everyone else concerned, the owner was not seriously hurt, but it was close. Due to the circumstances of the event, and with close consultation with interested parties working together, the county established an ordinance for that location, preventing the discharge of firearms from the county-owned Mad River Park. As a result, I don't believe any further instances have occurred at that location. The original proposed ordinance would have prohibited discharge of a firearm in an area defined as being all of the county west of the Humboldt Meridian. We go for a very specific incident in a location to half the county. Around the same time, a couple of guys in the Bridgeville area were discharging firearms. It was done from the porch of their house along Highway 36, shooting across the highway, the Van Duzen River.
I think you're going to have to wrap it up, I'm sorry, but if you have it written out, and we'd love to see a copy if you can make that happen.
Submit that to the clerk of the board.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Supervisors. My name's Emily St. Corrin, and I'm a staff person with Redwood Community Action Agency, and we've been helping to support the Peninsula Community Collaborative, or the PCC, that has been actively working to support improved health and safety on the peninsula since 2016. And we're really grateful for Supervisors Bass and Wilson for bringing this item forward. So, as both Supervisors Bass and Carol Vandermeer just shared, the PCC in the last couple of years have conducted hundreds of interviews with residents from Manila to Samoa to Fintown to Fairhaven, and we've also received input through our annual surveys on the peninsula. And we've really heard that many residents on the peninsula are adversely affected by target shooting near their homes and on the public lands on which their families recreate. And so, then specifically this last year, between March and April of 2019, during the PCC's annual survey, nine different households in the town of Samoa noted that shooting was very problematic for them and really impacted their day-to-day living, what they let their kids do, how they spent their time, if they went outside. Between May and September of last year, even more residents from Samoa noted, and also in the Manila and Fairhaven area, really noted that target shooting was really an issue for them. And so, the PCC has been focused on a lot of issues relating to feeling of safety, working on dumping and blade and walking and biking safety. Target shooting was not one of the original issues. But once we heard from a total of 43 individuals on the peninsula that expressed concern about target shooting, the group decided, we should probably research this. We really appreciated, again, the help of the supervisors on the peninsula and also under Sheriff Bro coming out to a PCC meeting and talking about the issue. But I really want to emphasize that many people who shared their concerns with the PCC really spoke on the condition of anonymity and didn't feel comfortable coming here to speak tonight, or, you know, or in public. And so, some others will kind of share what some of those individual specific comments have been, but I really want to emphasize that the PCC believes people should feel safe and be comfortable in their homes if they rent or own. And the PCC is really hoping for action now on the peninsula. The peninsula is the area that the PCC is focused on, and perhaps there could be benefits at looking at other ordinance opportunities for, throughout the peninsula later, but really encourage you to look at options one and two. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So, hello, my name is Carla. Oh, yeah, I can lower. Much better. Thank you. And I am also a staff person with Redwood Community Action Agency, helping to support the Peninsula Community Collaborative. I participated in surveying door-to-door in Samoa last year, and so I heard firsthand the concerns from the citizens living in Samoa. And these concerns include the following comments on the unofficial Samoa shooting range. So, the first comment I have is, I live in Fairhaven and the beaches are pretty much my backyard. I have heard people shooting in various places over the years. I think people don't know that we even live here. They think it's all fair game and it's not okay. The second comment I have is, we were walking on Vance Avenue and heard a stray bullet literally whiz above our heads. When you actually hear a bullet whiz over your head, it can be nothing else, not a ricochet, for instance. Third comment, I am too nervous to go jogging from my house to the beach, because I don't know when there will be gunfire or where they're shooting. I can't see the shooters, are they shooting blanks? Are there safety protections for the neighborhood? It's ridiculous to think that this is allowed. Number four, I would like the shooting range that Dan lets people use near Recology to be closed. Number five, I used to live in a more dangerous area in the southern part of the state. I felt so safe living here where there are not so many people. It's so peaceful, but now I hear gunfire outside my house, and it makes me wonder if it's actually safer. I don't know. Number six, we don't let our kids play outside unless they are behind the house in the backyard, behind the building. We just can't tell where the gunfire is coming from. It's louder than echoes. I have no idea how many people are there or what they are doing. Number seven, my neighbor finally moved because of this. He just couldn't handle it anymore with PTSD and everything. And there were many more comments, but those were just the ones that I wrote down here. And the PCC's focus is on improving the safety and well-being of Peninsula residents and visitors. And we request that any ordinance you consider include the Samoa Peninsula and address the immediate concerns of shooting on the peninsula. And although our focus is on the peninsula, the PCC is supportive of county-wide ordinance change that limits shooting in densely populated areas, close to residences, and nearly heavily-used public recreation areas. The PCC encourages the board to direct county staff to develop an ordinance based on option one or two in your staff's report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, I am Nancy Ihara, and I am a Manila resident and also a member of the PCC. And I just want to address, before I read my notes, kind of the comment about the ordinance not being enforceable, and this was actually an issue at the Manila Community Service District about dogs on the beach and whether they had to be on leash. And the conclusion was, yes, it's hard to enforce dog, having dogs on a leash, but if you don't have an ordinance, you have no way of dealing with it. You're not saying to people, it's not okay, you know, that they need to do that. So, I just want to point that out. So, I do not live in Samoa, so have not experienced what residents there have. I can imagine, however, how alarming it must be to be aware of gunshots and not know for sure where they came from, how close they are, and in what direction the bullets are flying. It's been weeks since I read testimony from residents recorded by a reporter of the Lost Coast outpost, but it was pretty shocking. I believe one resident actually said he was aware that a bullet passed by within feet of where he was standing. I hope all of you read the account. It is not that I have never experienced nearby gunshots. I live about a quarter mile from a homeless camp. All is quiet now, and has been for the past year, but a year ago, gunshots were fairly frequent. While I have always believed the shots were coming from the camp, I was not always sure. One night, I huddled in my bed, worried that perhaps someone had a gun and was shooting in the area where I parked my car. It sounded that close. Of the possible options offered by staff, the one I support the most is option one, but I would add language to strengthen it. The gunshots I heard coming from, I believe, the homeless camp, were not, I believe, the result of target practice. People shoot guns for other reasons, to demonstrate perhaps their new possession, to warn off people, to perhaps celebrate an occasion, to show off. Hopefully, staff can come up with language that will include other motivations besides target practice to make option one stronger. So, option one included the language in or near all residential and heavily-used recreational areas of the county, and I think that's a good description. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm Kevin Jenkins. I'm a lifelong member, our resident, I'd say, of Humboldt County and a resident of McKinleyville. I am the vice chair of the McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee, but I am speaking before you as a citizen today. The firearms and shooting is something that has been a discussion with Supervisor Madrone, with Sheriff Hansel, for several years now. We've approached it before the Municipal Advisory Committee. The challenge I have is creating something, or having you create something that is actually enforceable. My past experience has been in the sport shooting since I was probably seven years old. I also am a firearms instructor, and I have worked as a hunter-safety instructor also. Of the proposed solutions before us, I lean towards the 150-yard safety zone, only because that's something that is already being included in the hunter-safety classes, that's something that's being included in all of our firearm safety instructions that we've given for decades now. I do understand the peninsula's concerns, and so I would suggest or propose that maybe not one solution to this problem, but a multiple-pronged approach. The peninsula, it might be where that entire area is bounded off. That is something that's just geographically easy to define. When you get to the rest of the county, that's difficult. McKinleyville's not currently incorporated, where do you draw that line? The district would, if use that as a line, would include a lot of rural area that sport shooting can be conducted in a very safe manner. So, I understand, and I express a concern as to the challenges that you face trying to create one answer to this complex problem. And I would suggest that perhaps looking back at creating a couple of different solutions that are a little more situationally appropriate might be suggested. So, I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Welcome.
Good morning. My name's Brian Hunter. I'm a fifth-generation Humboldt County resident, I was born and raised in Ferndale. I grew up when it was socially acceptable to have firearms in our pickup, you know, whether it might not be legal, but in high school, I mean, it's just the way it was. Growing up here, I've systematically seen our areas of access be denied for shooting. I mean, there was multiple ranges on PL, PALCO, whatever you guys want to call it, out on Forest Service, they're systematically getting shut down. When they get shut down, and I am an RSO and member of Redwood Gun Club and Long Prairie, we have seen a huge influx of people going to these ranges shooting. We have limited resources to maintain a safe shooting space. We have limited resources to maintain a safe shooting space. This range, this impromptu range out in Samoa, I understand the sheriff's department's been out there. It's been verified that it was illegal and safe range to shoot. I understand the people's feelings about, you know, they don't feel safe, but in the same token, we're above all a team. They need to go out and investigate themselves and verify that, you know, they are not shooting towards their houses. Yes, you are hearing the firearms shooting, but they are doing it in a safe manner. And I'm just asking you guys, before you do something that unfortunately is going to, you know, impact all of us because of the small populations on both sides screwing up for everybody, just really consider what you're going to implement on us. If you're going to restrict access on certain spots, I ask you to maybe open up county-wide shooting ranges that the county owns and runs in different parts of the county, because, you know, there is a huge shooting community. I do a RSO help-out for the ladies handgun program. We have, well, there's been over 400-plus women come to that program. Many of them were very afraid of firearms, didn't want to touch them, but by the time they've gone through the four-hour class, they were at least comfortable having them around and understanding them. So, a lot of this is a lot of feelings, and that's something that is education. So, that's why I'm just asking you guys, just please don't restrict, you know, as much as we already have. Our state is total anti-second amendment rights. I'd hate to see our county go that direction, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Tom Mattson. I'm a resident of Alton on the Lower Ill River, and the issues that we had out there have been primarily resolved with your ordinance. There used to be bullets flying by and we couldn't go down there for a long time. It's where my daughter rides her horse. It's where we walk our dog. It's where all our neighbors go. And the ordinance that you adopted has really, really helped. I have not had a bullet fly by me or my daughter in probably two to three years. Thank you.
Thank you.
For over a decade, my family has been the victim of shooting barrages where many shooters fire large caliber, high magnum semi-automatic rifles and pistols simultaneously, sometimes for six or eight hours, sometimes daily, until the beer runs out. The deafening onslaughts are terrifying and so loud, we cannot have a conversation at the dinner table or watch TV, even with earphones, or talk to someone on the phone. We cannot host friends or relatives or undertake simple tasks. We are afraid of entering or leaving our home because we have to pass through the shooting area in order to get to the county road. Even at 200 to 300 yards, I've measured decibel levels that were dangerously high and known to cause health problems and considered by our county general plan to be clearly unacceptable. What can be done? I'd like to suggest a couple of things. One, I would hope that these deliberations eventually result in a county-wide program to protect citizens everywhere. Not sure why residents in rural areas should not be extended equal protection. An advisory committee is past due, and in part is needed to do some of the following. One, undertake a comprehensive fact-finding effort to identify the laws, rights, and proposed ordinances that could and should apply to shooting. Number two, identify the health effects of high noise and what high decibel levels mean, which ones are acceptable and not. How should risks to health, welfare, and safety be mitigated? Three, apply existing federal shooting range guidelines for safety zones, design, and construction necessary to mitigate against many hazards of shooting. Most safe areas in these federal guidelines call for at least one mile safety zone. Four, develop common sense protections and concepts of decency that need to be secured for public places, public roads, children's schools, the elderly, and even the sanctity of home. Pursue law enforcement's refusal to investigate or enforce already existing state laws, which are many, protecting us against the harms imposed by shooting. We were not able to get the sheriff's department to investigate a single complaint over 10 years. So, what are three goals? One is to stop the normalization of lawlessness and rebuild our rule of law. Three, reclaim, reinstate, and reinforce the legal protections and rights that have been denied to victims. And three, it's imperative that we develop ways to raise the standards for civility and decency in Humboldt County. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment on this item for the public? Okay, I'll bring you back to the board. I do want to make a couple of comments here as far as overall gun safety. There is a law on the books about negligent discharge of a firearm. That is against the law. We're talking about a rural area where people who are safe gun owners do want to keep practicing so that they don't become unsafe gun owners or lose whatever expertise they have. And then we've heard concerns about the number of firing ranges that are out there. So, there's a lot of concerns, but what I hear specifically right now is that on the peninsula, there's some real concerns, and I've heard the proposal that we address that one first and look at a county-wide with a citizens advisory committee. Mr. Fos gave us his letter, had a look at it. He had some very specific suggestions for who should be a part of that. So, generally speaking, I think, really appreciate the input we've heard and toss it back to the board, Supervisor Bass, and then Wilson.
Can I see the letter?
Yes, of course. Sorry.
I was going to read the point.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you handed it to me, right? Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I appreciate the folks who did come here today also, and, you know, I know Mr. -- I think it was Mr. Hunter, you know, referenced systematically being shut down and access decreasing, and I think he's absolutely right, but some of that is because of some challenges that have happened. And it's important to note that people do need a place to shoot. They need a place to practice in order to keep their, you know, gun safety practices up to date. But while legally, the range that's out in Samoa currently that's being used, and it's not open to the public, there are five people, I understand, that have now been -- had been allowed to be using it, but there's no supervision. And so, while it may be legal, it's not necessarily safe all the time because there are shots that whizz over people's heads because someone's not shooting the right direction. And then one of the more concerning things that, you know, not, you know, that maybe I can share with you that I've heard about and I've had it verified, is that some people don't always shoot in the direction you're supposed to. And there was a person who was attending, using this one range, actually without permission, that was doing more of a -- the competition-style shooting where you move to the different stages. And that wasn't appropriate because there was nothing in those other areas, you know, that he was shooting off in. So, that's where I think the concern is for some of the folks, is that most people that shoot, I think, would be responsible, but there are some that aren't necessarily thinking and no one's providing them direction on that certain use of that certain area. But I do, like I said, my sons, my family are all hunters, and I think it's important to have access to the ranges. I'd be curious to know how many of the other are out there and if they're impromptu ranges or, you know, we know about the official ones. And so, I mean, so it's bigger, but we don't hear as much about them. But I also would suggest to you, if we're talking about being Samoa-specific, I, you know, the owner of the property and I have talked multiple times. He has lowered it to one. I mean, it is his right to let this happen, but he has mentioned in the past being willing to stop it completely, you know? And I don't mind bringing this to him. It is his right to have that out there, but he has been willing to do this. So, I don't know if you want to do ordinance specific to an area, or, you know, I'd be more than happy to approach it from that direction first, because I don't want to hold up the rest of the discussion on this ordinance for a specific area. I don't know if that -- is he shaking his head? Well, I'm not calling on you, though. I don't have that.
Actually, thank you very much. Supervisor Bass.
Well, and it sounds like, and, yeah, there's quite a few impromptu historical shooting ranges out there. I think we just heard about one on Neyland that's been active for a long time. There's like three or four, because back in the day, I think Mr. Hunter mentioned Pacific Lumber had probably five or six up Freshwater, up Neyland, Scotia, Yager. I mean, their own, at one time, they had 2,600 employees, and all the employees knew that they could go out there and target shoot out there. So, part of it is a mindset that goes back to what Supervisor Madron, I think, what everybody said up here, "It's education." But it also sounds like it's an issue right now. I mean, I can tell you an advisory committee, I think, to work on this and maybe add pods of the Samoa Peninsula. I think the Samoa Peninsula, a lot of their issues go away if the property owner follows through with, "I just won't allow it anymore." And so, we bring in option two, something the sheriff can work with. It's a state. And I'm not going to ask the sheriff on this now, but shooting enforcement rules, I don't know if fish and wildlife can be involved in that at all when there's shooting problems or anything else, because it's for them to decipher if it's shooting or actually illegal hunting. So, I don't know if they were involved. But that's a statewide ordinance that is working, that maybe we could adopt and maybe have the advisory committee. The advisory committee, I think, is a great idea, but we're going to be here six or seven months by the time we get all those people with all their meetings to actually getting something done where it sounds like we have an immediate problem. It's been a long-going, you know, and we can add anything to an ordinance, areas, put something in place, and amend it as we move along by suggestions from the advisory committee. So, if there's something that's enforceable, that is already proven, and a big part of this is education. And I know Mr. Jenkins from Asa, McKinleville, is the only one here, but I have talked with Jack, I've talked with Grundmans. I'm certain that Virginia Sun and RMI would be involved and Bucksport. None of these people are in this business to give themselves a black eye. They are in there to promote responsible gun ownership, shooting and hunting and fishing and outdoor. I mean, there's a lot more to it. They're not just selling guns and ammo out the door. But I think if we start putting that education factor out there, and that's our, a little bit on us, to make sure we have the flyers, the handouts. Fishing Game does it every year. They hand out of new rules because the rules change every year. I think it's our idea to let people know areas that are off-site. And I think the 150 yards covers almost all the houses in Manila, especially if you wrote the ordinance to community, community areas, recreation, you know, where people gather, residences, commercial, you know, basically structures. I think we'd be there. And as far as enforcement, very few golf, for $69, you can put a range finder on in every car, and they can tell you 150 yards, pretty easy. They don't have to have a tape measure, and they're accurate within 2%. So, I would like to see something to put people at ease right now that we can work on, and then have the advisory committee add to it if, and maybe include these separate pod areas that are maybe having more of an issue. But education and just us discussing it here really lights up a fire with, because we've seen it in Fernbridge, because the problem's gone, it hasn't gone away, but it's a lot easier. As Mr. Mattson said, that was a huge issue all the way up and down the river, and that has been pretty much subsided, not all the way. So, it's just a thought, if we can address it immediately and then add to it, or do we want to make sure we have all the ingredients before we throw it in the oven?
Supervisor Wilson.
I'm going to have to say, out of what I heard from testimony today, I thought Mr. Jenkins had probably the best, from my perspective, way of looking at this, which was a two- and almost three-pronged approach. One is to deal with the issue of adding target shooting or basically adding to our existing ordinance, the buffer related to the 150 yards, which matches. And I will note that we have a 200-yard buffer from cannabis because of the smell. Like, really? Seriously? We're giving more of a buffer to the smell of cannabis than gunfire. That's how we prioritize these buffers. I always want, you know, that is, just saying, like, that's, let's think about that. For the activity of shooting a gun, we deem as more safe next to people, residences, than growing a plant that smells. And so, I want to, you know, get that, our perspective is often, is often, is just made from the times and the space we're in. And the second thing that was, that I think we should do today is, again, we're only making recommendations to staff to come back to us with language to deal with this, would be to put the peninsula as a target shooting free zone, whatever that is. It's, I think, it's reasonable. We have enough people complaining. It has enough of density of both residential uses but outdoor recreational uses. There's a lot of people out there using that space. It's the most-used recreational space, public recreational space, next to our largest urban center. So, I think this is a pretty reasonable place to start, and we could ask staff to come back with language that does that. And then third, I think that the idea of an advisory committee, I would ask that maybe we create language that we have an advisory committee that's purely ad hoc when a supervisor from a district has citizens that have an issue in their location, such as maybe, you know, McKinleville, or if it's in Alderpoint or wherever it is, where citizens are feeling like they need to address this issue and can do that. Because one thing I don't want to see us do, I almost feel like if we add another advisory committee, I feel like we should remove an advisory committee, because we have so many now, and we're just, we're having a hard time keeping people on those things. And, you know, I have to say, as a community, we're, you know, we have kind of meeting fatigue at some point. And I think, I think an ad hoc version of that and having maybe staff come back with some suggestions on how that might function so that communities, you know, can come together and address those situations themselves. And so, I will make a motion, actually, that we ask staff to come back with language to amend our existing ordinance so that it includes 150 yards from any occupied structure. There's a buffer. Includes and expands the prohibition on target practice and target shooting or any, you know, shooting of a firearm, except in maybe self-defense or whatever we have as language that we have already within the, because I think that's already in our ordinance, within the peninsula. And to, thirdly, give us some language by which communities can establish ad hoc committees to, if they so choose to want to, you know, address that.
I'll second with a question.
Supervisor Bass.
That's kind of why I agree 100% with, having worked out at the peninsula and been around out there quite a bit. I originally said, a limited ordinance restricting target shooting in or near certain residential, commercial, and heavily-used recreation areas, i.e. the beach peninsula, because you have four parking areas out there which are already, make them, and you add that 150 yards from that heavily-used recreation area, and now you have that 150 yards going the other way. You're pretty darn close to getting to the folks in Fintown out there, all the way across the peninsula. So, when you take a look at those parking areas, you go to the Millell Dunes, there are so many recreational areas being used that we can do, throw in there. Now, you also throw in the aspect, you, the peninsula has the big aspect, even though most of it used to be state highway, and I guess a certain part of it is now the county. We have that highway running through, and if you go 150 yards from that highway, you're in the bay or the ocean darn near. So, I think, I think number two covers everything you said, so I appreciate staff for almost covering it, and it gives us the opportunity to further, to see with that, I'll throw the caveat in there, that Supervisor Bass talked to the landowner, and maybe we end the unauthorized. caveat in there, that supervisor Bass talked to the landowner, maybe we end the unauthorized, even though that does meet all the criteria. And unsupervised gun ranges are always going to be around because the cost of having somebody, there's only so many volunteers, like, there's only so many volunteers to serve on committees. So number, staff did a pretty good job on number two, and I think that's, you added a lot more words to it, but I think that covers, well, I think it covers most everything because it covers the recreational areas, commercial, any dwelling that's occupied or is going to be occupied no matter how often. So we come pretty close, and it, the sheriff, I think, mentioned that that might be enforceable because it's already, it meets a lot of the state's criteria, so.
I just want to clarify that my motion was this buffer that we talked about, but also a geographic-specific exclusion for the peninsula. And I think that in that way it sets a model so that other areas can make requests for that, and we have an understanding and some language for that. And we already actually have, you know, a geographic exclusion related to the, to the state highways. And I will point out that Navy Base Road is not a state highway.
Agreed.
Not included in the
Used to be.
In the ordinance. So from my perspective, the first is the buffer, the second is the exclusion area, which is, is, you know, which is defined, and the third is a process by which a community can also add themselves to that ordinance in the future should they so choose to go through some process.
So for clarity, then, it wouldn't read certain residential, it would specifically call out Samoa at this particular point?
The peninsula.
Exactly, the peninsula. And then, and then any additional residential areas or within the unincorporated town, county could be addressed via these particularly, particular citizens advisory ad hoc committees.
Yeah, and I want to, you know, say that we can have conversations with specific landowners, I suppose, but, you know, I have to say, we have to be very cautious of the, of that sort of precedent in terms of how we relate to people because we give certain property owners, it's just not, it's just not a fair communication, you know, standard. And I know the term "good old boy" network is always something that people put out there.
Wow.
We have to, well, I'm just, what I'm, what I'm putting out there is that these, these personal relationships are meaningful, but they can't supersede the processes that we're going through. And I just want to make sure that we're, we're clear about that. And I use that term very loosely. I don't mean it in any sort of gender-based way, but I just want to make sure that we're talking about protecting everybody, you know, and not, and not specific people.
Supervisor Bass and then Supervisor Bone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think the reason, you know, I'd like to say the reason I mentioned that option for now is I didn't want the other work to have to wait. If they can buy some time, you know, and peacefulness and sense of safety, you know, I understand kind of what you're saying. Took a little offense at it, but I know none was meant, probably. But, but at the same time, I'm hearing your, the motion you made and Supervisor Bone was suggesting he thought that was captured into, maybe what we could do is kind of modify to, to be a limited ordinance restricting target shooting in or near certain residential, commercial, and heavily used and recreational areas of the county, beginning with the peninsula. I don't know if there's a way that that makes any sense at all. Okay, doesn't, I just, I want to just pick somewhere.
As a second, I have no problem with including the peninsula. Clarify that. And, and, and I don't even, the good old boy thing got me. I thought it was, more often than not, there was no good old boy involved in that. I thought it was, I thought it was admirable, and I'm not actually sure who the good old boy out there we're talking about is. I have an idea, but I haven't talked to him about it. In the last six months, I haven't talked to him. But with that being said, I thought it was awful gracious that he offered to address it for the safety of the people on the peninsula now. Now with the new construction, we're probably going to be within that 150 yards. So if we include that, I'm, I'm really good with it. I need to make sure that, where's the, where do you consider the peninsula starting? Because we have a gun range out there that I really need to be addressing.
I'm going to consider it, basically, starting where the Mad River Slough basically begins. So, and straight across the Pacific Ocean. So the Mad River Slough Bridge, I guess, is what I'd say, which is south of what you're talking about, the area of your concern. It's about maybe at least quarter mile, if not a half a mile, south of that.
The gun range?
Yeah. On that map, right there. So definitely nothing north of what's on that map currently. And the gun range is north of that.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to make sure that, I didn't know what the, so, yeah, action now, sounds like it may be, this is going to come back to us again since we can't pass it today. We can just kind of, and I think if anybody's concerned, any more concerns that we need to add something, I'm sure they'll be here, but I don't, I think they would have been here today, hopefully, and they can come and talk. That's why we do it that way. So, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just, yeah.
So there was a lot of back and forth here, and I'd like Brian to read us what you got from that.
Go, Ryan.
And it's okay if you have questions.
So I will tell you what I captured.
Okay.
So I got, direct staff to come back with a language to amend the existing ordinance to include the prohibition of shooting within 150 yards from any occupied structure, which includes and expands the prohibition of shooting of a firearm on the Samoa Peninsula, and direct staff to provide the board language to establish an ad hoc committee within communities.
I think that's, I think what Supervisor Bone wanted to add to occupied residences was, was also heavily used recreational areas.
And that's what calls for in too heavily used recreational areas, because that gives you an idea if there's a park and ride or something like that. Not everybody's going to park there, it's going to, you know, so they, people have to, so there is some degree of separation.
And I would ask that our staff, John Ford, because you're the one that this is going to land on, I imagine, does this seem something that you can work with in terms of language?
The direction is clear.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Nice job, John.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None passes unanimously.
Through the chair, I want to say this is probably the most, one of the most civil discussions in the country related to firearms, anything, and I appreciate everybody in that. So, everybody did a great job. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. So we have a time set at 11:00, but I think the Department of Health and Human Services, could, can you do your presentation in 20 minutes or so? Okay, great. Thank you, Connie.
Thank you.
So we have before us from the Department of Health and Human Services, basically a report and update on the Transition Organizational Assessment Study and the Blue Ribbon Task Force. And we have our Director of Health and Human Services, Connie Beck.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisor Fennell and other supervisors. Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. I'm here to provide you with an update on the Blue Ribbon Task Force and also talk about the Wendy Brown Report. So first, I'll remind you of some history. Director Philip Crandall announced in March of 2015 that he planned to retire at the end of that year. Director Crandall had been the only director of DHHS, which was formed in 2000 through Assembly Bill 1881 integrating public health, mental health, and social services. Your Board commissioned Wendy Brown Creative Partners to do a study to find out what was needed in a new director and how well DHHS was working 15 years into integration. After conducting focus groups and online surveys with staff and partners reviewing a ton of written material and interviewing key people, Wendy Brown Creative Partners presented the final report to your board in September of 2015. A lot of us didn't find the report surprising. We knew as a large organization, we had the strengths and weaknesses identified in the report. The report had 48 specific recommendations for the county and for DHHS. Recommendation areas included organizational culture, staffing, and structure, and relationship with partners. The board asked Wendy Brown to conduct a recruitment for a new director based on the recommended qualities and processes in the report. After the recruitment, I was named the DHHS Director in January of 2016. One of the recommendations was to form a Blue Ribbon Task Force. Now-retired probation chief Damiano and CCRP's director Connie Stewart chaired the 10-member task force. Its final report came before your board in July of Since the Wendy Brown Report came out, DHHS has had significant changes in its executive leadership. Every deputy and director is new to their position, except for employee services and fiscal, who were both hired in 2013. I think part of what was hoped for in the report happened in developing our new leadership team. Since we are new in our roles, we have looked at DHHS with fresh eyes. There are challenges, of course. All of us had to get up to speed. The teams at the branches are new also, as almost 90% of the branch deputy directors were new to their positions since January of 2016. The Wendy Brown Report said that the branch directors do not meet together on a routine basis. It also said it will be critical for the new director to embrace and model participatory management style as well as develop a strong executive management team that shares responsibility for program successes and problem solving. The larger group of deputies and directors meet most Wednesday mornings, and there's also time carved out for me to just meet with program directors for this work. I'm very pleased with the current executive leadership team and confident it meets, it meets that goal. Before I discuss the 48 recommendations, I wanted to talk about a survey we did recently. We asked the same organizations and people that Wendy Brown contacted in 2015 how we are doing now, four and a half years later. Attached to the agenda item, I included a brief summary that staff prepared comparing 2015 responses and 2019 responses. We got Wendy Brown's email invite list and made sure we contacted the same partners and people. If a new person was in a role, we contacted the new person, but other than that, we wanted to be able to make a direct comparison. We didn't cherry pick. We did the same on the questions. We asked fewer questions, but what we did ask was worded the same as it For mixed responses, the first bubble, when I first read the 2019 responses, I was disappointed. We received some pretty critical feedback like the second bubble. We received some very positive feedback like the first bubble, but I, but I think it's human nature to focus on the negative. In 2015, 8.5% of respondents' answers about DHHS strengths touched on organizational culture or collaboration. In 2019, over 40% of strengths were in those general areas. DHHS staff can be very proud that number of partners who think culture or collaboration is a strength is almost five times that it was in 2015. The anonymity of the survey presented some challenges. It was critical. We gave people the opportunity, opportunity to be anonymous, but they, so they'd speak openly. A side effect is that we are unable to respond. For example, this comment about increasing the number of beds at Semper Byrons. I would like to tell the respondent that a section of the 1965 Social Security Act restricts most inpatient mental health treatment programs that serve Medicaid and Medi-Cal patients to 16 beds. This rule is a federal rule that affects all 50 states. It's the reason facilities are at 16 beds or fewer. I liked the last quote. I feel that we are all rowing in the same direction and that we are all on the cusp of creating a streamlined and functioning social services system in Humboldt County. Another result of anonymity is that it's hard to tell which of DHHS branches, divisions, or programs the person is talking about. One person called DHHS strengths communication, while another said it was an area that needed improvement. I'd bet these partners are interacting with different parts of DHHS. It would have helped me to know which areas people were speaking to, and I do encourage that any respondent who gave critical feedback to call or email me. I think the survey results reflect that DHHS has come a long way in the last five years and that we still have a lot of work to do. Now on to the 48 recommendations. I've given you a handout with all of the recommendations listed. I'm happy to say that 19 of the recommendations have been implemented and are complete. Five were not implemented. 48 recommendations is a lot. It isn't surprising that 10% weren't the right fit for Humboldt when we took a close look at the recommendation. Another five were out of DHHS's scope, for example, developing an overall county regionalization policy for all departments to follow. Lastly, 19 of these recommendations are currently in progress. Some of the recommendations were broad, so it will be hard to ever say they are done. For example, a recommendation was to ensure DHH staff is accountable to the concerns of the schools. The DHHS Education Leadership Group has been collaborating as never before. Schools have hosted training for DHHS staff and vice versa. DHHS is working on its third contract with HCOE on a position shared to serve the vulnerable students in Humboldt County. We have the Bridges to Success Grants, which has co-located DHHS and HCOE staff in schools to provide school-based crisis services. I'm proud of the work that's done, and I'm, I believe Superintendent Chris Hartley and many school staff would agree that we have come a long way. We know that collaboration and improving services will always be a work in progress and that we can't consider done and in our rearview mirror. You'll see on the document I provided that we have provided the prioritization level of the outstanding 19 recommendations. We have listed 12 as high priority, six as medium priority, and one as low priority. Some of the high priority ones are ones well on track, for example, the relationships with schools I just talked about. The other areas are making significant progress, including organizational culture and CWS improvements. Some of the others are mixed. For example, building tribal relationships and tribal cultural competence are two recommendations that are still a work in progress. Both are high priority. The county and the Hoopa tribe signed a government-to-government protocol. There are other specific successes I could cite to show DHHS's good faith progress. However, a lot of work still needs to be done in this area. Part of the work of healing tribal relationships include providing basic mandated services well, and I'm about to talk a little more about that. As you are aware, we have had a budget deficit in mental health for many years, and you are aware of the lag time between providing services and reimbursement. We are working again with Wendy Brown and experts in mental health financing to see how we can improve our system in order to provide services needed for the community that are the most cost-efficient I think I skipped. There are 22 changes listed on this slide, including Humboldt practice model implementation, new onboarding processes for every employee, ASA's efforts, and establishing the home division. I could probably add another 10 or 20 items to this list of changes and work efforts, but the font would get too small to see. A lot of these efforts were welcome, and some A lot of these efforts were welcome, and some were long overdue. In the end, CWS and Humboldt County children will see positive change due to the AG's stipulated judgment. Humboldt practice model and high-performance organization implementation have been a key part of the successful, ongoing culture change and staff empowerment efforts. We also needed new onboarding efforts to retain our employees. It's a lot, though. We are experiencing some change fatigue. This is also a time when we are working on our basic service delivery. The new directors are working to ensure that, above all, their branches perform their best functions, their basic functions, well. Now to accountability. The direction of the board was to ask DHHS to report back with a plan of action with prioritized recommendations with measurable outcomes. That is why DHHS did the second survey. In addition, DHHS is currently monitored by numerous state agencies. DHHS has hired monitors, a tribal consultant, technical assistance consulting specifically to comply with the requirements of the AG's stipulated judgment, which affects almost every element of child welfare. DHHS was subject to thirty-one audits in calendar year 2019. I am evaluated semi-annually by your board. DHHS was tagged in fifty Public Records Act requests in 2019. DHHS is being held accountable, and I am being held accountable. The directors and deputies are working to hold their staff accountable as one of the basics we've been focusing on. So going forward, our executive leadership is focused on cementing the positive changes we've made and is committed to necessary system change while focusing on shoring up our basic services. We're supporting new and existing employees better. We're working on communicating more and better with staff, with partners, and the community. We will continue to make improvements in our systems. So to sum it up, I believe that our current efforts are taking us in the right direction and are consistent with your board's strategic framework and goals. Thank you for the opportunity to present this, and you can ask any questions that you'd like.
Thank you, Connie. Supervisor Bone?
Well, I think in the last, I've seen a noticeable shift, and I thank you, and especially your staff and your new hires, new directors, because I think they are being very nimble and very reactive, because we call a lot. What I liked the last five years is, instead of building programs in DHHS, we're building results. It's not how many people you have, it's how many people are getting the job done, and I do appreciate that. The other thing I've noticed is you have, your whole department is a lot more accessible to outside agencies, CalFresh being a perfect. I mean, when you go to Food for People, you go to Humboldt State, you look at the increase in food, you know, the CalFresh options available. You guys are opening that up to so many other people, so people have available for good, healthy foods, and they know it's available to them. So I think that's been great. I really appreciate the quicker hiring process. I know you've had to work with, but I mean, trying to get people into these positions quicker, because we get these people, they're qualified, coming out of college, and then we have a six-week lag time. They don't have six weeks. They need to start getting, and I appreciate the efforts that have been made there, or perceived efforts. I mean, I think the results are showing and things like that. And going through the almighty federal and state dollars for mental health, homelessness that are out there, and always championing those rights. I know we're still woefully underfunded for what we have to do, but I know that you're increasingly getting more money every year, and that's appreciated by me and I think a lot of the citizens, so. And your availability. I mean, as a director, you are our largest director. You have the most people than any of us, and they're doing the job, but I have seen a definite cultural change in attitudes by your employees. So I think there's, you know, by a lot of them. So I appreciate what's going on, and I have to say thank you to the Blue Ribbon Task Force. I think they did a yeoman's amount of work. That's another one of those jobs that we overpay people to do. Oh, wait, we don't pay them, do we? But they come in, and it's a good cross-section, and it's given us a good blueprint to follow and some of it, which you're already doing. And reaching out, we had a tenuous relationships with the tribal entities, and I think that is changing too, from everything I've seen, so much appreciated.
So with that, I would also say thank you very much, Connie. I do see the change in the culture, if you will, at the department. I see an engaged staff. I see more of the staff than I used to. You know, you're delegating responsibility, which is really, really important, but your own accessibility is also very much appreciated, and your responsiveness in getting people to deal with the issues that we see from time to time in our areas. And I know you've got a lot of challenges, and many of the challenges that we read about nationwide are the kinds of challenges you're having to deal with, you know, homelessness, mental health, drug addiction, et cetera. And so, thank you for your efforts. It's a very, very difficult job. I do want to echo what Supervisor Bone said about the Blue Ribbon Task Force, because it basically gives you a map for how to move forward with the areas of challenge, and really appreciate their work as well. With that, I'll open it up to public comment.
I didn't have that much reason to communicate with the department before when Philip had it. I will concur that Connie and her staff have been available to me when I had questions and responsive. That's always greatly appreciated when the public has that perception. I think, are we the biggest employer now in Humboldt County? If not, we're like number two or something like that, the county? My understanding is in the last, for some of your tenure, we've increased the county's budget by forty-five percent. Is that a correct number? It seems like it's something in that general area. And of course, this has been the same ratio, basically, as far as in this one department, which is close to half. It bounces back and forth as far as half that goes. So my concern, and I will continue to speak on this topic, is that, well, as an example, today you had a budget item on here. It was number six, California Workforce Department. And out of that, there was five hundred eighty-four thousand, five hundred sixty-nine. Ten percent went to administration, I guess, or to administration here. Sixteen thousand to CR, seventy-three thousand, five hundred sixty-eight to a West Side, and four hundred thirty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-four went to DHHS. My concern is, and will always be, we may get these kind of monies, but where is the PERS contribution coming from? We're considerably always going backwards on those things. I still think a policy and the best thing any department of any of your departments to me are to move whatever will work best, when it's viable to do, into the public, into the private sector. We have a lot of funding out there that really needs to be, and to me, that should be the biggest thing to strive, to downsize this, to just manage these private sector people who can really have a dog in the fight and do that. So I always strongly encourage that. That's part of the reason I think they had a recommendation for outside consultants. I still wish to always caution, we're trying to set up all these satellite areas to service people. Our current president has been quoted as saying, I think, in the last few days, if I recall, I can't remember which network, but possible intention is to take care of our deficit by downsizing all of the programs that are run through our DHHS, especially if we're in California, which he does not really like much, California is my impression. I will always caution toward that when things do go negative on those kind of things. We have to be in our best position to cover our PERS costs, and we need to have outside employees more than we have county staff. I know everybody likes to have big government. I can see a really disadvantage to that when it is time to downsize. We're still stuck with retirement, and yet we can't let these people go because of the process. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this item? Bring it back to the board, Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too want to thank you, Connie, and all of your coworkers for the incredible efforts trying to deal with so many issues with limited funding. No matter how much money we have, excuse me, we frankly never have enough to really do all the things we need to do. So I value the balancing act that you all have to perform in doing that, and in particular, I value the work with the tribes that you've been doing. I really want to commend you for your outreach efforts and trying to resolve conflict and find common ground and move forward on really important things there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I have a lot of the same experiences with different organizations that you really, when you stepped in, you really put a lot of energy into repairing relationships and doing things differently. And what I'm thinking of in specific is the Mental Health Subcommittee of the Medical, that the Medical Society had. I mean, that was right during this time of change, and I think you and I were at all these evening meetings, and I was amazed you were always there. And I think a lot of things have really moved forward to improve many relationships. I understand your concerns or your thoughts about not knowing who responded, because it's hard to improve on something when you don't know who it is that has the concerns about it. So that was an interesting information, and how do you define it more next time, I guess? But I really appreciate all the efforts.
So do we have, Supervisor Wilson?
In the interest of time, I'm just going to thank you for all your hard work and recognize all the changes that have been positive and all the positive changes that are coming too. And we have a time set for eleven, so anything more specific, we'll talk offline.
I will entertain a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All of us in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Director Beck. So we have two items still. Look as if they're coming up next, but they're not, because we're going into time-certain closed session. Those other items are Public Works Ordinance Amendments, and the other one is a public hearing with regard to coastal zoning. So I will ask County Council now to tell us what we're going into closed session for.
It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54, 956.9 D1, in order to confer with legal counsel regarding existing litigation in the case of Jeffrey S. Blank versus County of Humboldt et al., case number CV190389. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54, 956.9 D1, in order to confer with legal counsel regarding existing litigation in the case of Jeffrey S. Blank versus County of Humboldt et al., case number 119 CV3055.
Thank you, Council Miles. To, I'll take public comment first.
I do have a point of order, which you can address after I make my public comment. When will we reconvene, and will you also be addressing the Forbes issue? It sounds like not, so we'll be reconvening going from there. I guess I can make that assumption, or I'd appreciate clarity on that afterwards. Obviously, I have a great amount of angst with this process. I've made that quite clear. I don't think I lack any clarity on that. Settlement is always in our best interest. I have not encountered anything anywhere close to this, or even heard about anything close to this, as far as something going on for this kind of time span, without there being definitive there, there. If the there, there is not there, then the pocketbook is open. People, you can't do this to someone. You can't put them on paid administrative leave and not let them know and let them address the issues. Can this man ever get a job again? What have you been doing? I've been on paid administrative leave. I was a whistleblower. I, what kind of resume would this person have for the rest of his life? Because he has to be transparent. I think it's shameful. If there's there, there, terminate the person. Should have been done thirty days after the fact, if there isn't any there, there. I haven't even heard that addressing, you know, the assessment you've had by someone going out and interviewing people. There's been no actions. Your Brown Act violations are horrendous, as far as actions being taken and not taken on this particular topic, and it just befuddles me that the county would put themselves in the position. It befuddles me that always correcting things. I would settle this thing when cut and run as quick as you can, because it's going to get larger, and it's going to keep going. Every day that goes by that you have somebody, like if you are not able to get a job in your profession because of this cloud over yourself, every day that goes by, that person has cause, and the judge is going to say, what are your losses? He'll, I can't get a job. I was a whistleblower. They chilled me. And the rest of the county doesn't feel like they can be a whistleblower now, because they're going to have to deal with somebody else that they fear who's in the top positions as far as what's going on. So this is just totally wrong, as far as dealing with all of your employees, your employee relationships, except terrible precedent, as far as people being able to come forward and correct something without having retribution. I would fix this immediately. I consider it to be extremely shameful, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll ask Council Miles, how long do we think this will take?
I'm able to answer that question, and it should be about twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes. So that means we'll be back in here roughly around eleven-thirty and continue with the meeting. We'll say eleven-forty, just to be careful. And are you ready, Ryan? And are you ready, Ryan?
Are you ready?
Okay, great. So coming out of closed session, there's nothing to report out. And that will bring us to the next item on the agenda, which comes to us from Public Works Department. And we've got a lot of amendments to the ordinance, so I'll toss it to Director Mattson.
Good morning, Chair and members of the Board. Tom Mattson, Director of Public Works. The subject is an ordinance regulating certain things on county roads, and I will defer to Counsel to read the ordinance and the record before I go into the staff report.
Currently before the Board is an ordinance amending Sections 421-1 through 427-7 relating to stop signs in the Shelter Cove area, amending Section 431-2 relating to accessible parking spaces for persons with disabilities in the Redway area, amending Sections 431-21.5, 431-52, 431-63, 431-65, 431-86.5, and 431-109 relating to parking restrictions in the McKinleville, Lolita, Samoa, Cutton, and Eureka areas, adding Section 431-61.2 relating to parking restrictions in the Hydesville area, and amending Section 435-3 relating to bicycle lanes in the Hoopa area of Title IV of the Humboldt County Code.
Thank you. As stated, the ordinance does affect areas throughout the county. Many of these items are cleanup items, such as the ordinances for Shelter Cove. The stop signs were never backed up by an ordinance when the subdivision was originally built, so we've noticed all of those and produced those in here so that they can be properly enforced. And a lot of the parking regulations come from either property owners or through board members for safety reasons, visibility reasons. Some of them are extensions of existing zones, some are new zones. The disabled, people with disabilities, parking is in front of the new Supervisor's office in Redway, which was never under an ordinance. And if you have any questions about any one of them, I'm here to answer them, but they should be pretty straightforward.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah. I'd love to, I'm going to make a motion to accept staff's recommendation with a statement after I get a second.
Second.
I really, and I think all of us can agree, the simple act of putting up a stop sign because it's safe or painting a curb red or disabled seems so easy to everybody, but the legality reasons and making sure everything is vetted and everything else is a elongated process, and I applaud Public Works for following up on the multiple requests they get. So I, with that, I'll move, I do move the ordinance.
Have a second. Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Along the lines of Supervisor Bone, I don't think people always realize that it can be really a challenging thing, and sometimes it doesn't go the way you think because you might want a red curb, and next thing you know, they're doing a sight lane, you know, I mean, a study of the entire street down the road, and all of a sudden, you've got more red curbs than you thought you were going to have and impact other people. So it's not, it's not just go out and get it done. It takes a lot of effort.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The one under bicycle lanes, Red Cap Road, it says, in the Hoopa area, that's the one in Orleans, yeah.
Orleans.
Good. And I met with folks out there just two days ago, well, on Friday, and they're very grateful for the bridge that was put in that actually had the expanded shoulders and all that. And this is sort of the follow-up to that, to really make it safe for the community out there, and they very much appreciate your efforts, so I wanted to pass that on to you.
Thank you.
I had a quick question, just in terms of, you know, I read through the ordinance. I wasn't quite sure. Are the stop signs, there were 38 listed, I think, and then even within those 38, there were like three or four at different places along the road. Are those already existing, or are they all going to pop up now?
No, those are all already existing.
That's what I thought.
We found they didn't have an ordinance to back them, so we wanted to provide that ordinance.
Okay, great. Good. Don't want anybody asking me, why are you suddenly? I don't know how many of them there are, but there are a lot. Okay. Any public comment on this item?
Only speed hump, stop signs, I just, California. I did wish to thank Tom for you guys cleaning this up, even though we have to retroactively do some ordinance changes here. I concur with every one of these things as far as my input goes. I would look forward in the future, something possibly coming forward in the 5th District in the Willow Creek area. There is a potential for a passenger walking lane, which the people feel are quite necessary out by the post office there as you head out towards the golf course out there. So maybe at some time, that will be brought forward and look forward to working with the local people out there who strongly support this, and they've contacted the 5th District Supervisor Madron, so that would be great to see that one come out for public safety. And there is a comment out there, your ADA compliance, last time I wasn't there, wasn't completed yet. I think it was started probably about three weeks ago or six weeks ago, and yet there's still a little bit. Maybe it's finished up by today, but the sooner those get done, the sooner those can be put into operation. And thanks for taking care of these across in your team. I recommend everybody vote yes on this one.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board. Again, thanking Director Mattson and your crew and everybody for putting this together. And all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
That will bring us to our next item, and that is a public hearing. So I will open the public hearing. I have, hold on a second, the process here.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. It's John Ford with the Planning and Building Department. You've opened the public hearing for two items. They're basically to adopt an ordinance addressing personal use in the coastal zone for cannabis and also for cannabis dispensaries within the coastal zone. These go back some time. The Board originally approved these, I believe, in 2015. They've been waiting for Coastal Commission certification. The Coastal Commission did certify them, and so now they're, they made some slight recommended changes, and it's really the opportunity at this point to accept the recommendations by the Coastal Commission. Before Mr. Richardson gives you a short presentation on what the changes are, I'm going to ask County Counsel's Office to introduce them and read them into the record.
Currently before-
Thank you, Director Ford. Sorry?
Currently before the Board is an ordinance repealing the existing cannabis personal use ordinance, number 2523, Sections 313-55.1 and 313-55.2 of Chapter 3 of Division 1 of Title III of the Humboldt County Code, to be replaced by the provisions of the proposed ordinance, Sections 313-55.1 and 313-55.2 of Chapter 3 of Division 1 of Title III of the Humboldt County Code, with the modifications suggested by the California Coastal Commission incorporated therein. Also before the Board is an ordinance repealing the existing cannabis dispensaries ordinance, number 2554, Section 313-55.3 of Chapter 3 of Division 1 of Title III of the Humboldt County Code, to be replaced by the provisions of the proposed ordinance, Section 313-55.3 of Chapter 3 of Division 1 of Title III of the Humboldt County Code, with the modifications suggested by the California Coastal Commission incorporated therein.
Thank you, Council Miles, and Planner Richardson?
Thank you, Chair Fennel, members of the Board. Michael Richardson with the Planning Department. The nature of the changes made by the Coastal Commission are to update the references. When the Board took action on these back in 2014, 2015, commercial cannabis was not allowed use, and since then, it has become an allowed use. So the previous ordinance included only medical, a medical allowance for cannabis use, and we are expanding those provisions to also allow just recreational use of cannabis. That's the majority of the revisions that are being made. The personal use ordinance also, probably the most significant change compared to what your Board approved back, way back when, is the ordinance didn't include any acknowledgement of what the allowance would be for personal use on parcels that are five acres or larger in size. And so we just took the same, the same standards that apply to parcels that are between one and five acres and have used those same standards for parcels that are five acres in size or larger. And then with regard to the dispensaries ordinance, the only significant change that the Coastal Commission is asking for is we had an allowance for dispensaries to be located in the MG, which is a heavy industrial zone in the coastal zone, and the Commission noted that, you know, retail sales is not otherwise allowed in that MG zone, and so they, they want us to change that to only allow it in the MG zone and in the MC zone, the coastal dependent industrial zone, as a, as an interim use, meaning that it's a temporary use, and it would be associated with a microbusiness. So those are the big changes, and from our perspective, those are relatively minor. We haven't had any public comments. To the contrary, Planning Commission, it was a slam dunk there as well, and we didn't have any public comments presented there either. So we're recommending approval.
Supervisor Bone?
Again, I'll make, to approve staff's recommendation and-
Oh, excuse me. No, you can go ahead. I wanted to hear from the public now.
You certainly can after it's been-
Yeah, yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept this, and duly noted, it took almost five years for the Coastal Commission to get us back to us, but I do appreciate them getting on it. Second.
With that, I'll go to public comment. Sorry.
Ken Swawski, having been in constant, ongoing comments with Melissa Kramer of Coastal Commission staff for five years on this project, I'd like to note that it was not necessarily the Coastal Commission's fault this took so long. It at least was 50/50 as far as timeframes, as far as things being sent back and being back. I think one time was a year and a half or two as far as a response from the county back to the Coastal Commission. I think that as far as what these things take should be acknowledged. I do approve of what Melissa Kramer's and other staff members' output was on this. They spent a lot of time, a lot of thought and consideration were put into that, and I strongly support you moving forward and following on this topic. But I did think that should be made clear as far as, it's not always the Coastal Commission that is throwing the monkey wrenches into things sometimes. The other thing I found is that, I don't know if there's a general policy, but a recommendation in the future, if you have things that you take a rough draft possibly to them, rather than putting them on the timelines and deadlines of them getting things, get feedback in advance. That's how it seems to work, and that's hopefully what's going to expedite the Betty Chin Project, a rezoning project through Eureka, if they follow with that process, rather than having things go where there's 10, 10 days, and that taking an additional minimum of three months up to, you're off topic a little bit, but that's generally dealing with the Coastal Commission things I think staff should be aware of. You could reach out to them, and I could be corrected, but that's the feeling I got from them.
Thank you. Any further comment from the public on this item? I have a quick question as far as how this relates to the inland ordinance. Seems to me that there are some aspects of this that are a bit different, and could you point out those specific aspects rather than just the general? Like, I think there was that 600-foot addressed more than just churches and that kind of thing. I think it might have been 600 feet from something else as well, maybe a recreational area.
You're talking about the dispensary at that point?
So from residential neighborhoods and their inhabitants, church, playground, libraries, all of that is in the inland as well?
Yeah, those are our requirements of the inland that the Planning Commission's required to consider.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Oh, no, sir.
I have a quick question. Do you know why the Commission is demanding that it all be indoor rather than six plants outdoor? I mean, that's something-
It's both indoor and outdoor.
What's that?
It's both indoor and outdoor.
There's two sections of, of the ordinance that are being revised. One is for indoor, and then there's also outdoor-
Okay.
And dispensaries.
Okay, so the outdoor already exists. We're not changing it, so that's why we're dealing with the indoor part right here.
No, it's just that in the staff report, the indoor comes first. And so Attachment 3 is the ordinance for personal use, and that comes in two sections. The first is the indoor section, and then the second is the outdoor section.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So go back to the vote. All those in, oh, excuse, oh, I closed the public hearing. I have closed the public hearing officially. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for work on that. And I believe-
One final close session.
That does it for our meeting today, except for a closed session, one more closed session. And do we want to go into that right away?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we all want, okay, so please, if you would, Council Miles.
It is the intention of the Board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54-956.9D1 in order to confer with legal counsel regarding existing litigation in the case of Forbes versus Humboldt County, case number 419CV05514JST.
And I'd like to continue my not going, recusing myself from this particular item.
Okay. Great. Any public comment on this item? No public comment. Wow. Okay. We're going into closed session, and we will report out. County Counsel, any idea of how long this might take?
It shouldn't take any more than 10 minutes.
Okay, so we'll be back in 10 or 15 minutes. Thank you. I guess we got to go get Ryan.
There is nothing to report out from today's closed session.
Thank you. We are adjourned.